No one is required to participate or be present for any of these, and being in this portion of the meeting is completely voluntary. Our prayer and pledge will be led by Ms. Rosales.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we bow our heads and pray, I would like for us to pray for a dear, dear friend of mine. And I'm bringing her name up as a petition prayer request because she did work for one of our schools in the county, Christiana Middle, as a counselor. Her name is Ginger Etheridge, and tonight she is fighting, she's fighting a critical terminal illness. And so if we can, please, if you can remember, say a prayer for her. Bow your heads with me. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for being a gracious God. Thank you for being a God who listens and who loves your children. Lord, I lift up every person who is dealing with some type of sickness. Your word says that by your stripes, we're healed. So I pray in your son's name that healing comes to people's body and they'll be transformed. Lord, I pray for the board as we're getting ready to make decisions on behalf of so many people in packs, not just our students, our staff, but also the parents. Give us divine wisdom and discernment as we make decisions. So we love you, we praise you, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Before we lead the Pledge of Allegiance, I would like to introduce the group that's going to lead it tonight. And it's coached by Ms. Heather Wharton and Ms. Courtney Gregory. And I would like for them to step up to the podium and introduce the group and share a little bit about this phenomenal group of students. But before Ms. Courtney starts to speak or Ms. Wharton, I want to share a little fun fact about Ms. Gregory. Ms. Gregory and I had the pleasure of knowing each other way back in the good old days when UT had its glory. We both were football hosts, where we recruited many fine young men and also got to meet Pete Manning. So that's our claim to fame.
Well, thanks for having us tonight and letting us lead the pledge. But I do want to recognize our kids are winning their 18th T double S double A state championship in the small coed division. We've been doing this, Ms. Wharton and I have been coaching these kids for a really long time, very proud. But when you've done it 18 times, they kind of can run together. But with this crew, that day, we woke up at 6:00 a.m. And we drove to Knoxville and competed. We have two football players on our cheerleading squad as well. And the game had been moved from Friday night up to Thursday night. So we went, we competed. Our two guys raced back to get to the football game. Then we raced back and got to the football game and won the first round of the playoffs. So what a memory to win a state championship and then come back and win the first round of the playoffs. And we're still playing, go Blaze! But very proud of the work ethic that they put in because sometimes it can be thought that, oh, competition comes first. That's most important, and absolutely not at Blackman High School. Our support of our school and our community and our football team come first. And then it's nice that we get to have these other accolades as well. So with that, we'll let you say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Blackman Coed Cheerleading, for coming and leading the pledge. Thank you. Congratulations on your 18th championship.
You should have stayed up there. You should have just stayed up there and said, "You're going right back this weekend to Maryville, aren't you?"
Oh, that's right, because Blackman is playing in the playoffs. Well, then, we're not going to play in Maryville. Actually, it's a home game that'll be on Friday. And I hope everyone can come and cheer Blackman against Maryville. Go Blaze! Go beat Maryville, please.
Thank you, girls. First up, we have the agenda. Do we have any items we want to add to the agenda? Any comments or questions? Yes, Ms. Sharp.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I see where we have teachers. Thank you for taking care of them because they're there early in the morning and helping with the weapons detection. Will they kind of rotate in and out per semester?
It's up to the teachers. They have a contract for the year, but we do allow them to switch at the semester. And we have a couple that, for one reason or another, had to switch, but we ask them to do it semester-long.
Well, I'm seeing that too as I'm riding the buses, and they're getting them in there. They're doing great jobs. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, next we'll move to the approved...
Ms. Maxwell?
Yes, Ms. Rosales.
I have one more question. Dr. Sullivan, so these are the stipends for this year, and so we'll have to do this again for next year, for the next semester? Okay, perfect. I just want to clear that. Make it clear.
Any other comments or questions from anybody? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Any comments or questions there? Okay, we have no public comment tonight, but we do have Ms. Shannon Groom with us tonight. And I was hoping she could come and speak to us just briefly about the resolution that passed regarding our nurses.
Thank you, and thank you to Ms. Sharp. I think the TSBA just passed a very similar resolution to what the Rutherford County School Board passed, where asking the Tennessee Legislature to add additional weights or formula to TSA to help sufficiently fund school nursing in the schools. So very excited to see that getting a little bit more momentum going forward.
Thank you. It's about time.
And so you're also the Tennessee School Nurse Director, so that's going to be part of your agenda as well, that agenda as well.
At the most recent conference, I was voted in as the Director to the National Association of School Nurses. So legislative initiatives are part of my duties for Tennessee.
Excellent, excellent.
So excellent. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Will we be following that closely? Thank you.
Yes, we'll be following that as well.
So, Madam Chair, if I can, just a minute, if I may. I have spoken to a couple of our representatives because we want to see if we can get sponsors of the bill. I spoke to Health and Ed, and they're going to talk. If, once we get the sponsors, we'll go to Health and Ed, and then they'll send it through the full committee.
Excellent.
I'll let you know when we hear something from...
Okay, thank you. Dr. Sullivan, did you have something to add? Okay.
I was just going to welcome, this is the first time here with us, Mr. Roger Johnson is here. You don't have to come up and speak. We'll do a formal introduction at one of your other meetings. But Mr. Johnson's our Transportation Director, and he is here tonight, so I just wanted to introduce him to the board.
Settling in.
Yes, yes.
Can he come before the mic?
Sure. I mean, he didn't plan to, but...
That's okay. It's just on the spot.
It's just up to you. Would you like to? You could say just a... You could just say hello.
Yes, introduce yourself and just share a little bit about you.
Again, my name is Audrey Johnson. I am a retired Army Officer. I'm a retired federal government employee. And I'm also an ex-senior director of the Denver Public School System Transportation Department. I want to thank Dr. Sullivan and my boss for giving me the opportunity to come here, to do and use all of my experience, all of my knowledge, to try to develop a transportation system that's safe, that's reliable, and that the public can trust. That is our goal, that's our desire. And I just need your help as part of our team to help us do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Thank you so much.
It was awesome. When I met with him, I was talking about, you know, the bus transportation world can be political at times, especially in the county, the way we run it. And very respectfully, he was like, yes, sir. I've presented my budget to sitting members of Congress before. And I was like, understood. Thank you. Understood, sir. Thank you.
Next, we have Rutherford Proud.
Yep, so first, we have a member from Tita here to present. Dr. Wally Luckey, who at Smyrna High School has been selected as 2025 John Simi Teacher of the Year Award by Tennessee Educational Technology Association.
Good evening, Dr. Sullivan, Madam Chairman, senior board members. My name is Jill Pierce. I'm the Executive Director of the Tennessee Education Technology Association. We're made up of members from public, private, and higher ed. And we put on a lot of trainings and things. We work very much with TOS and TSBA. I apologize, I came in on two wheels. I was at a meeting in Bartlett, and like most school meetings, they run over. But I'm sure y'all have no, you have no experience in that at all. So as a retired educator of 30 years in East Tennessee, I think my accent kind of gives me away. But we're very proud to be here today. And I know that Wally didn't know until they contacted him for this meeting. I want to give you a little background. Obviously, the Department of Ed does the Teacher of the Year, which is a very distinguished award. But we realized that in our organization that there was a little bit of a gap about teachers being able to do that were outside your standard education format. And this can be applied for any classroom teacher across the state. But I want to give you just a little background so you know. This is a statewide award. With the presentation of this, Wally gets a free trip to our state conference, all expenses paid. Nothing comes out of the Board of Ed budget, which is always a good sign. And so I just want to read kind of what this is very quickly because I know getting out is always good before a holiday. The John Simi Teacher of the Year Award is basically presented to an outstanding educator who embodies excellent and integrated technology to enhance teaching and learning for their students. This award is about teaching and learning, not just technology. But we do have an emphasis that we want to see that they're using it efficiently because that's always the main thing. We can put a lot of shiny things out there, but it's not good unless it benefits that child in the classroom. So I'm very proud that this year's winner is Mr. Wally Luckadoo from Smyrna High School. I'll present this to you, and I hope we'll get a picture and all that kind of stuff at the end, whichever works out for you guys. We'll get a picture from there. But this is a statewide award. And like I said, he'll be recognized at our state conference also. And we'll have some things sent out on the national wires with our national affiliations also. So Rutherford County shows what great teachers they have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. You want the board to? Okay. We have the best staff. We constantly have someone up for awards across the state and federal level. Just so proud.
Yeah, we do.
Next, we have the man of the hour.
Rob, you're up. And so the board can see it's something that we are trying... Can you go back to that? We are, you'll see that John has on the screen. One of the things our board agendas have that you can see is they are 300 and 400 pages long at times. And so we're working to link, like, all our votes, everything else will still be the same. But we're working to link documents here instead of having tabs to hopefully make it a little bit easier for people to follow. Everything else will still look the same. The format just looks a little bit different. Thursday will still be the way it's always looked, the 300 and 400 pages. But that way, people following along, and anybody that has their computer, they can follow the links here so it doesn't look 300, 400, 500 pages. And then just follow it there. Lot cleaner.
I do like this.
All right, Rob, it is all you.
Good evening. I heard man of the hour, so I have at least an hour, right?
Yeah, wait, Rob, it is all you.
Because everyone's about to throw stuff at me. So this is part two, right? So back on the fifth, we met. And I think we met for five and a half hours. And we dug into enrollment, demographics, development, capacity, and started talking about what does this all mean as we start to plan for what you're going to hear tonight. And so a few things that I wanted to address just to bring to your light from the last presentation. I got into those tidbits. So if you went back to page 36 of the enrollment report, so the big report that you got back then, we've had conversation about what is going on with like Stewart's Creek, or Brown's Chapel, or Poplar Hill. And when you go to page 36, just in Stewart's Creek alone, we have over 6,000 units that right now are planned to be built. They're not yet built. If you go to page 34, where you see the scatter plot of all of the units, you see there's been a tremendous number of units that have been built in that area. And so when we talk about some of our elementary challenges, it's the amount of development and how we're yielding kids out of those areas. And really, what I'm setting up is when all those units are built, we're going to be making some other boundary changes in that area. We just can't get around that with just the number of units. The other tidbit before I get into this presentation of the boundaries is if you go to page 66 of that full report from that day, that gets into retention. So we went back to the 2018, 19 K-11 students. We had over 41,000 students. As they aged through to see who's here, we've had 13,000 students of that original K-11 that progressed, and we're not here as they move forward. So there's a tremendous amount of movement. We just think of retention. Those kiddos left, and they were replaced by other students. And where they went was dictated by what developments, age of inventory, value inventory, type of inventory. So I wanted to give you that context that the reason we're having to do boundaries is we just have a lot of stuff going on here. So that's my prelude into this. We started out in this process really trying to see from two years ago how are things tracking with the middle school zones that we thought were needed. And that was where it was also at the elementary. We need to do some additional work. And so we've had a couple admin meetings here with the color code here where I met with the admin team to say, here's what we've come up with. Here's what this might look like. How do we start to address things such as transportation impacts, things with maybe some areas where we initially thought, hey, you need to go here. But now, as we look at what's happening with growth, hey, you may need to come back. And so how do we think about that? How do we address that? That's what you, as a board, will get to deliberate and talk about. And I want you to know that whether it's your admin team or RSP, we really take to heart that this is difficult, this is challenging, and we're trying to get to the point where we have some sort of plan that it is just known when we have this growth, we know there's this number of students, we have this building that's coming online, it just will make sense. And we're getting closer. We're starting to have some of the right facilities. We have to plan for some more facilities, right? And that's kind of the conversation that we started to have at our last meeting that I'm sure we'll have a little bit more tonight. So this brings us to that last blue, not the last, second-to-last blue box that says today's date, so November 18th, where you have your first read of what this information is. So our current data foundation, so again, just a recap of some of the other information that you've received in the past, is where's our enrollment tracking? And we're tracking towards 56,000 students when we look at this K-12 enrollment. So continued growth in spite of higher interest rates. We're still seeing high demand of people moving into this county and kids needing to be served. We have our existing elementary boundary map to refer to. Again, we're zoomed out to the entire county, so that's why it's so small. What the current enrollment is with the buildings forecasted over the next five years, out to '30, '31. This gets at, when we looked at Stewart's Creek, they're over their program capacity or their functional capacity. If you remember, we talked about that as well at the other meetings. How do we develop this functional capacity? So go back to some of those documents, and you start to see the data that's trying to drive us into having the right decisions. The other elements that we had integrated into this is how do we align with showing not only you, our community, but our county commissioners that we're effectively and efficiently using our resources? This is why we're looking at some of these boundary changes as well. So if there's places where it makes sense, where we have capacity, try to move those kids in there. If we have too much students at some building, we have to do something different. Usually, that is moving students to another building. We look at our middle school boundary map for this current school year. You see those solid colors representing those middle school boundaries, just like the elementaries. And then what was proposed for '26, '27. So again, the solid colors bringing on a new middle school. And then what our current projection tables are when we bring that new building on. So what became very apparent on this table is we have very limited middle school capacity where we actually need the buildings and where the students are. And so as you start to tie this back to the data, this is why we, in the proposed plan that we had before this evening from two years ago, we can see that we still had some issues that we needed to address. So that's why we started to dig into it. So we did have some challenges. So I mentioned Stewart's Creek Elementary. We wanted to get them where they would be utilized because that's negatively going to impact the student experience, parents' experience too, just trying to get in and out of that site. We also were looking at Walter Hill Elementary as an older building. And so do we expand the Wilson Elementary zone? So you'll see that in the elementary plan. In the middle school, we have Poplar Hill opening up. And so we're projecting a capacity there of about 1,200 students. And when we previously looked at this, we know that the zones don't adequately balance enrollment and utilize our space. We looked at Blackman Middle because they're overutilized, Christiana Middle, overutilized, Rockvale Middle School, overutilized. And then we've not done a comprehensive middle school rezoning since 2017, '18, right? So it's been a while. We've been able to hold things in place, but we're now at the point where we just have to do something, right? And opening up the new middle school provides that opportunity to try to address our overutilization across all of our middle school buildings.
And Rob, I think that's a point that is, none of us like rezoning. I think this is my fourth year as Director of Schools and third year that we've had to do rezoning, knowing that we were so far behind in our building program and outdated in our zoning lines that this was worth going into, we knew we would have to do. But not having a district-wide middle school rezone in nine years. We're stretched too thin in areas that have grown over that time, but our lines are outdated. And I think it's pretty amazing to think you could have had a kindergartner in 2017 that made it the entire way through eighth grade at the end of this year without having. I think we had one or two neighborhoods get rezoned from Siegel to Oakland during that time. And that's all we've touched at the middle school level.
Impressive. Good, excellent points to add to this. So when we started to look at the zones, we focused first on the elementary. And again, just for the benefit, we're zoomed out for the entire county. And what I wanted to highlight is, when you look at the legend, what we've done on this map is to illustrate where some of those changes would occur. And so at the elementary, we have areas from Walter Hill Elementary to Wilson Elementary. And then Area B, we move areas of Stewart's Creek to Brown's Chapel. And again, that's where I go back to what I told you. The number of units that are being built in this Stewart's Creek area is just tremendous. And to try to keep our boundaries as tight as we can in some of the other places, it will not be achievable. We're going to have to be looking into the future as being 6,000 units just in that one tight area. A lot of units being built. When we go to what the Concept One looks like, where we have zoomed in a little bit, as we look at this map, get my glasses out so I can help you guys work your way through this. So with Concept One zoomed in, one of the things that we also put on here is where we have school properties. So this also starts to get into some future planning of where in the future will we build some other capacity elements. And then when we look at the projections for Concept One, what you're able to see here is, again, to my point, Stewart's Creek still by '29, '30 will be over capacity. But we're able to work through '26, '27, '27, '28, and '28, '29 with those boundaries being able to potentially be in place. Caveat to that, if we build the units greater than what we are projecting, it may not last that long. But the goal is, is we have these first two years and we start to plan, what is the next elementary space that's needed?
Two things on this, Rob, if you don't mind highlighting. One, just for people that have been following this. So our work with Rob and RSP has been going on since summer of '22. So we started with an enrollment analysis and building, or building capacity analysis all through '20, '22, '20, '23. Then we went into a rezone proposal that the Board passed, elementary, middle, and high school initial proposals in the fall/winter of 2023, with a caveat to come back and pass, to revisit six months before. It went into effect. So last year, the Board passed elementary and high school rezoning. Now we are to the point of getting to middle school rezoning. Just to give everyone background, this isn't the first time that we've worked. And so if community members are watching, and if you're a middle school parent and you're like, this is the first time I've ever heard of this. This has been almost four-year cycle now. But if you will go back up to elementary, the current enrollment, Rob, and show what happens if we don't do anything with Stewart's Creek? And you'll see next year, and these are how many students actually reside in the area. This does not include any zone exemptions. This is just how many kids reside there. '26, '27 is 1217, '27, '28 is 1318, '28, '29 is 1443, '29, '30 is 1594. Then you get to '30, '31, 1679. Brown's Chapel, 534, 519, 512, 491, and then 487. So while we know nobody wants to leave Stewart's Creek, we have schools close together. Nobody wants to be rezoned. But it's not fiscally responsible for us, at least in my opinion, to leave schools that close together and not utilize them. And have that many kids in one space.
So you can see with the elementary projections, we're able to hold all the buildings under the capacity through '29, '30.
The elementary looks good. I mean, it really does. Compared to where this, we looked at four years ago, when we had so much, that light shaded peach color was just half of our buildings. And now we have one. It's a lot better than where we were.
Yes, Mr. Tidwell, sorry, I was...
That's all right. Rob, do these projections take into... The buildings that you mentioned, the projects that are going on, the developments that are happening, are you kind of forecasting that inside of these projections?
100%. So within that model, we have a subdivision lifecycle that has a building permit allocation model. So as we look at what the developers are intending to build or what they have been building in some of these subdivisions, that's pushed in. And then as we look at how are they yielding a certain number of kids... And then as we look at, how are they yielding a certain number of kids with those first 25 units or 50 units? That starts to statistically help us understand, here's what this might look like, we're attracting younger age kids versus middle school or high school.
In that same vein, obviously, there can be some variance, right? There could be families move in with no kids, there could be more families move in with more kids. Since we've been working with you, have the projections kind of lined up with what you forecasted previously?
Yeah, good question. And I believe we've been at 99 to 100% accurate with the projections. Where things get a little bit off is when we get into the buildings, where some of them, and we can track it back to variables, like, hey, they built more units than what we anticipated, or they started to yield more kids because the value of those homes started to attract different type of students. So that's kind of been the value of the modeling processes, when it doesn't quite work the way we looked at all the variables. We know which variables need to get adjusted as we've been moving through. This is now, I think, our third cycle.
So we got some historical precedent, but it doesn't necessarily mean that's the way it's going to end up, but these are the most likely outcomes.
And most likely statistically driven by some of the data sets of what could happen.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
All right, so that was Concept One. So in Concept Two for the elementary, we again move areas from Walter Hill to Wilson. So that's up on the north side, right on our county boundary.
And those are the same areas, right, in both?
Yeah, same, same in both of the options. And then in Area B, we moved some areas of Stewart's Creek to Brown's Chapel. And so it's a bigger area. So when I zoom in, the area that we're looking to move, it's in the blue area on this. See if, does it just got a pointer on it? I don't think it does. Maybe it does. It didn't show up on the screen, of course. So when we look at the street, just to give you perspective there, of the areas that we're moving, this is near Alma Vale Road, and this, this big chunk here, just south of our property. And then we take an area that's on the north side, that's in Stewart's Creek. So trying to get things that are a little bit farther and on the east or south part of the existing boundary, and moving them to Brown's Chapel to be able to get the right number of students out. And we're not able to go as long in this option as we could with taking areas that are directly south in Concept One, from Stewart's Creek to Brown's Chapel. So if you remember, I'm going to go to the numbers. If we go back to One, we can get Stewart's Creek all the way till 2930. And in this other option, where we take the southern parts of Stewart Creek, and then the north and eastern part of Stewart's Creek to move to Brown's Chapel, that gets us only till 2829. So that's, that's the big difference as far as the number of students that we'd impact, or how long this boundary could potentially last. So those are the two things that we had at the elementary level to, to address something that we know we have to look at with Stewart's Creek. We'll stop there. Any questions about Concept Two?
Dr. Sullivan?
I have a point, Rob will not be here Thursday, so if you have questions and you want him to run models or something, everybody will just email me, then I can get those to Rob, or I can answer questions the best that I possibly can on Thursday as well. Because I can pull very easily the number of kids that are in each spot, but Rob models for us very well, as far as the number of kids in those spots.
Yes, Mr. Rosales.
So the whole purpose of having school in elementary, fully developed school, is that we can relieve... So we can relieve Blackman, Stewart's Creek, and Rockville. And it feels like we're back at the same spot a little bit, not necessarily with Rockville and Blackman, but with Stewart's Creek. So two questions. Number one, of these two concepts, which one gives relief to Stewart's Creek the longest? How many kids are being, what's the difference between the two concepts? Because you can't tell from here, you're just getting total numbers? Because I will hate to do this if we have to rezone and then have to rezone again, because there is development going on everywhere in this area where we're referring to. And so I, you know, it's, the whole purpose of what we want to do this is to prevent from a continuation of rezoning. So we want to get this right. And, and I know we, we're doing, and I appreciate all the data that you, all the work, because it's a lot of work and it's not easy. But we want to get this right, and we don't want to have to come back and rezone, because the way it happened is that it took too many kids from one school, and it's, it didn't really shook, it didn't shake the way we thought it was going to shake.
Fair, fair assessment. And when we look between these two concepts, it gets us an additional year where the numbers are similar. So in Concept One, we have 1,043 students in 2829. And in Concept Two, we have 1,035 in 2728. So it gets us one additional year of a similar enrollment. What that's suggesting is that in Concept Two, the areas that are left in Stewart's Creek have greater potential for more students to be generated. So this is where, if you go back to the original enrollment analysis and these 6,000 units, where are most of them happening? And it's, it's in the area around Stewart's Creek Elementary, more than what we're seeing in the south part of Stewart's Creek.
When you say the south part of Stewart's Creek, are you saying, going towards, um, Van Buren to Alma Vale Road? Is that the area you're referring? Because there's a ton of development over there. I do know over by, gosh, I don't know my, the road, what is that road?
Rocky Forest Road is...
Yes, Rocky Fork, yes.
Is the, is the northern part of this area that we would be taking south of that to Brown's Chapel in Concept Two.
And there's, and there's another development that's going on, well, right where Ms. Darby lives, and my brother lives, in McFarland with Arbor Heights, that's, and there's another development on Kid Road. I mean, there's just development going on everywhere in that area.
It's going all over the county.
Right, it's going all over the county, absolutely. But it's just like, it used to be farmlands, farmlands four years ago, and now they're just development everywhere.
Dr. Sullivan, I think you had something more to add.
The way that Rob and I worked on this, as we did the next two years, is our primary focus. And you'll see 1,244, those again are the number of kids that reside. Not every kid that we're projected to reside there are going to attend the school. They, we do have a larger attend there because of three school campus zone exemptions, that number's going to be higher than that 1,244 potentially. There are about 50 kids more in Option Two, as Rob was talking about, because it picks up more open land, where Option One is going to move more current students. Option Two leaves more open land, but still moves students.
So Concept Two is leaving room for the potential growth?
But it makes it bigger.
But it makes it bigger.
Because it's, it's moving more, it's still moving 300 kids, so it's still moving quite a few kids, but it's leaving more land you were going to eventually develop.
So it sounds like in 2030, 31, whoever's on the board may have to look at this again.
I don't think we're ever going to get away from doing this every couple, at least till we stop growing. I think that was our intent, but it's been this way for 30 years. I don't know a way to stop it.
The only way it's going to stop, it's put a, we're full sign out on the county, county line.
Mr. Tidball?
Yeah, so looking at the different concepts between the elementary Concept One, the Concept Two, Brown's Chapel is eating Stewart's Creek on, on both of them. But it looks like the difference, and you can correct me if I'm wrong here, is on Concept One in the zoomed-in view, it's grabbing a very dense area, just smaller geographically, whereas Concept Two is grabbing a much larger geographic area, maybe not as dense. And so to me, is, does that mean that, I don't know, just my brain thinking, it seems like we would, if we're trying to plan more in the future, the more rural area, the larger geographic area, is likely to pick up more development than the already super-dense areas? So that would allow, if Brown's Chapel's eaten up more than that, or more geographic area, and those developments happen there, then they're already zoned Brown's Chapel in the future. It seemed like that could be potentially a better long-term plan, even though the numbers generated show that it's going to be 50 more students in Concept Two in Stewart's Creek. I'm just thinking about the potential, potential developments, so.
Yeah, what you're getting at is the current kids versus future kids as the developments happen. So for sure, if you take areas like in Concept Two that are to be developed and are generating about 50 less students, it potentially could be as, as you stated.
Dr. Sullivan, do you have a recommendation? Is there one plan that works best for you?
Not particularly. Just know that if Concept Two is going to leave more kids at Stewart's Creek, and so if areas by Stewart's Creek grow quicker, then some of those concerns that we currently are addressing, we, we could be right back here. That's my only concern with Concept Two, is that it leaves more kids at Stewart's Creek. That's my only concern. I mean, it's 300 kids roughly at either one, so.
Ms. Darby?
I know I've already gotten several emails about the Stewart's Creek Elementary rezon being back on the table. And obviously, none of it was done intentionally, but I am extremely disheartened that we told the public they would be going back to Stewart's Creek after the new elementary school was built, and we are now talking about telling some of those same families that they're now going to have to go back. I think at the elementary level in particular, that's really hard to be pulling a kid back and forth. And I, someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think when we initially started all the rezoning conversation, one of our top things was not wanting to have to do this, and wanting to start really looking at, you know, picking a zone and trying to stick with it. And that might mean that a school sits more empty than another for a year or two until the building catches up with it, but at least then we're not rezoning every two years. So I think it's important that, that we look at it in that aspect as well. I'm also concerned with Concept One. It looks like, and it's sometimes hard to tell from these maps, but it looks like some of that is like right next to Stewart's Creek. And I can tell you now, it is not going to sit well with parents, that they live right next to that school, and then you're going to make them drive 15 minutes to another school. I don't, I'm not claiming to have all the answers, I don't know what they are, I don't know if we need to look at some really kind of out-there, out-of-the-box, unique ideas. I know I've had the thought of potentially looking at maybe doing a K2 and splitting off Stewart's Creek Elementary at some point. I don't know, I don't know what the answers are. But I think it deserves a lot of, of thought and discussion. Like we've all said, none of it's easy, nobody likes it. I just have a really hard time with going back to people that we told they could come back to Stewart's Creek this year, that now they're going to have to go back. That's just a hard sell for me, and it's really hard for me to think about us doing that to those really young students as well, so.
Mr. Ball.
I've got three or four observations, a couple directed toward you, Dr. Sullivan, a couple toward you. The modeling, when do you pick up the subdivision? When do you, how does the model work? Do you pick it up when it hits the planning commission at first, then you adjust it once you know the product that they're going to build? How much foresight do you have?
Great question. So there's really three parts, probably four parts. The first is when they go through the preliminary plat, so we become aware that something's...
You, you pick it up then?
Yeah, we pick it up then. And then we validate that when we get the final plat. Then third, when we have our meetings with the city themselves on what they're hearing in the process of talking with the developers and builders in that particular development. And then the fourth piece is when we're touring each of those developments to observe what we're seeing happen in there. And then the fifth would be when we start to get kids. How, how does that start to generate as you build 10 units or 20 units?
Yeah, right. And you've done it long enough, you've done this long enough, you have pretty good predictions. Depending on what the product is, if it's a zero-lot line condo, $400,000, that's going to yield one set of students. If it's a 600,000 development, if it's an 800,000, if it's a million, right? So you're, you're adjusting all the way through this.
100%.
So we shouldn't be cut off guard, as long as your data stays, stays up to date, and there's no reason why it won't, probably. The only reason we wouldn't stay up to date is if we don't get as information, I suppose. So it's, I'm fascinated, the more I'm around you, I'm fascinated by the model and, and the prediction and how close you are to this, because 30 years ago, we shot in the dark. It, it was just, well, what are they going to build? Is it a starter home? Is it a move-up home? What is it? Do we need an elementary school? Do we need a high school? What do we need? All right, here's a question for you, Dr. Sullivan. Looking at this, and I'm going to kind of be hypothetical just a little bit, I guess, looking at Stewart's Creek, if, at 2030, 2031, we're, oh, what, 170 students over, right? If we don't adjust, how many students go on a portable classroom? What's your average population?
We go back to where we were last year with portable classrooms.
About how many students per, per classroom?
And the portable's up to 25 is tough, but we try to cap those 2024.
You, you try to run them at 20. So in that particular instance, you would have to have, if I'm doing my math right, about...
We'd put them back out front.
Something like that.
Because we still have the portables in the back at Stewart's Creek.
Right, I know we are, but that, that, I guess the point I'm trying to make here, if we make no adjustments, then that's the other alternative.
Well, we'd have to have a lot more. Can you go back up to the current?
Well, okay, that...
Yeah, that's with Concept Two.
And then the, the third question, well, go, go back to that, I guess.
Yeah, 1,679, we don't have any room for that.
Right, right. You, you probably don't have enough land.
Nowhere. The soccer field at the high school. I mean, realistically, Trey, do you know any other...
I don't mean to laugh about this, but it is like...
There is no other land, correct? The geothermal wells are there, there is no other land, correct?
Okay.
Yes.
So then the, the, kind of the third point is, how much dialogue or input has transportation logistics had with this? Are we strict...
Trey's looked at it, but I, we have, that is far as it is, is looked at it.
Can, can we, can we dive a little deeper then and see if one way or the other yields better logistics? I, I hate to put our new transportation director on, on, on the spot real quick, but, but if he could do, they could do some kind of analysis, maybe?
Let Trey look at it a couple weeks.
Okay. Well, great. So that would give us a little insight, maybe, as to which plan would be better. Thank you, thank all of you for, for that.
You're hitting the ground running.
He is, yes.
Go ahead.
And realistically, it doesn't matter. Ultimately, my job's to make recommendations. I just want to go back, what the board approved last year had, we focused a lot on high school last year. High school had a lot of noise, and that's where our attention was last year. So what the board approved last year had Brown's Chapel at 631, moving to 2930 at 583, and let Stewart's Creek Elementary get to 1350. Obviously, that number's a lot higher than 1350, probably because of the new developments that I'm sure is there. We don't, we could have put 1350, not comfortably, but they've been that high before. We can't put 1679 on that campus. There's just, that many can't go.
Well, Ms. Maxwell?
Mr. Rosales?
So I agree the points Ms. Darby is saying, in the sense that we rezoned, and then we, there's kids that were traditionally going to the school, and now they're having to drive far out, because that was the concerns I had. I think the other thing is that when we did vote it on the map, it, it showed that the zones were going to level off, and that elementary school was going to help relieve everyone. Because what really started this was that the Stewart's Creek PTO emailed us in wanting us to do something because of the overcrowded in that school. There were classrooms that were returning to class, into classes that were turned into classrooms. And so that's what really drove the whole conference, really drove the conversation to do something in the elementary school. But it just feels really interesting that we're kind of a little bit back to square one in trying to help relieve Stewart's Creek right now. So I just, I think for me as a board member, I don't want to get back into rezoning again after we just rezoned. So I don't know how... one in trying to help relieve Stewart's Creek right now. So I just, I think for me as a board member, I don't want to get back into rezoning again after we just rezoned. So I don't know how that's going to shake out with all the development that's happening, because we can't control the development, and all the houses are coming in. And who's going to send the kids to the school either?
I want to give you another way to look at this, where you can see how far we've come. Here we are on November 2025, and we only have one elementary building that we're talking about having a challenge. If you go back when we initially write it, some of the boundaries, the zones for elementary, there were a lot of changes. What I'm trying to suggest to you is Stewart's Creek, we just have so much development, and the type of families that are moving in seem to be having a lot more kids in those areas, that we're going to be doing more boundary changes in this area. To your point, it's how can we try to better plan this? I would suggest areas that are closer to a building tend to be something that people understand you should go to that building, things that are, areas that are farther away maybe makes more sense, particularly if you're not the person that's close to the building, right? That's the perspective. They probably would go somewhere else. Our challenge is, in the Stewart's Creek, we're having stuff on the north side, having stuff on the east side, and then we're pushing down in the south side. And so we're just going to be challenged. Anyone that's moving into the Stewart's Creek boundary, whatever we choose it to be, I'm just suggesting there's going to be another boundary change likely before 2030, '31 school year.
So Dr. Sullivan, you said you don't have a recommendation for either one, Concept One or Concept Two? One is?
One moves more kids now, two moves more kids later. One moves, I don't like that Morton Lane is right behind the school, but the areas I'm most familiar with are the areas I grew up in, which is the north end of the county. And I know right now, we have 231 as a boundary line, and we have students that, our team here made a joke about if they have a two-story house, they can see Siegel Middle School or Siegel High School, but they go to Oakland. So to act as we don't have people that can see schools that drive 10 minutes to another school, that's not the way that we've ever been zoned in this county. It's just not our reality. I wish it was, but we're not zoned in circles. We're zoned by roads. And so a circle, we looked at when we first got together, and it just made no sense the way our schools were. I would love to have a circle, everybody within that little map goes to that school. We'd love that, but our buildings are not that way. I know our planner Shane Morgan would love to have that. He's got some great maps. He would love to have it. It just, that's not where we have land. Siegels, they're just the ones I think of, because there's neighborhood right across that we rezoned back in 2019 or 2020 that went Siegel to Oakland to relieve overcrowding.
Ms. Sharp.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So let me throw this out there. Since we have two charter schools that were just approved, I know Rocketship is looking in the seminary area. Do you know, is that an existing building over there? It's just property?
There's not one.
There's not a building? Okay. I know that there's some property over there. Is that something that they could help us with? Because of the elementary? Because there's zone for the elementary?
If parents use that, we've approved one, so.
Well, we have two now. So we've got Rocketship, and we have Nova's.
We have one. Correct.
Two coming to, there's two coming to Rutherford County.
Rutherford County Schools has one.
But it's a choice school, so we can't mandate kids.
We're not going to know who's going.
I'm not saying mandate, I'm not saying mandate them. I'm saying, could they help us? Could they give us some supplemental room if we work with them in the area and they built or bought in the area that we need and we don't have to rezon?
We can't force parents to send their kids there. So I don't know how we're going to be able to help. I don't, I understand, I understand that. I appreciate that out of box thinking into saying, let's see if the choice schools can help us. But the reality is, is that it's still very unknown how they can help us if the kids from this area is not going to that, those schools. So I appreciate the thought and its out of box thinking, but I don't, just don't know how we can enter into a partnership with them when this is a choice school. We can't, in MNPS, it will have worked, and I will have agreed with you, yes, let's do that. Because if MNPS, they have it where a choice school can be zoned in a certain area, and if kids are living in that geographical area, they can't go to that, that school, because that's how they work. But we don't have it set up like MNPS. I don't know how we can, I don't know how to change it to where we can do it something like MNPS does.
Mr. Tittle.
I would really ask and request that in order to keep this board from blowing up in emotions, that we would all seek recognition. I have been, since I have been on this board, I have always patiently waited to be recognized, and I would ask that all of the board members do the same. I think Ms. Sharp was simply asking if that in the future could be helpful, and I don't think the answer is, I don't think anybody knows, but it could, potentially. My question is about these concepts. There is no grandfathering, there is no dual zone. These are ripping the Band-Aid off, changes next year, right?
Correct.
Okay, because that was a huge issue with the high schools, and it really just delayed an inevitable problem several times, because we kept dual zoning stuff out. And so I just want to make sure that that's clear, that before that comes up at the next, whenever we do vote on this, that we are considering the options before us currently as the board comes to a decision. They do not include any grandfathers. So any kind of changes that are made, this board is aware that that will, could drastically affect what is our primary focus, which is these next two years. So just making that point clear.
Thank you.
We have never grandfathered eighth grade and below, ever. And it's not something we need to start doing now.
I agree.
Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Sharp. May Darby, I'm so sorry.
Not really a question, but just kind of another point I want to make sure everybody's thinking about is, elementary is the one school where our students stay the longest. So I think it's probably most detrimental when we continuously rezon that, because you have, that affects the kids more directly, the more often you do it, versus like middle school, they're only there three years. So if you rezon every three years, there's a good class or two that you haven't even bothered. Same thing with high school, but these kids at elementary school are there for a longer period of time. So it's just another thing to think about. I really would like to explore the idea of splitting Stewart's Creek Elementary into a K2 and a 3.5, because I think it would provide relief in an area that has a ton of growth happening right in and around that school. If we're looking at what serves our students best, what serves our community and our parents best, I think it's something that should at least be looked at and discussed. I'm really not a fan of pulling these kids in and out constantly, and he's already just told us that we're looking at another boundary change in another two to three years of the same school. I mean, it's like beating your head against the wall, doing it the way we're doing it, I feel like. I think it's going to require something different and unique. That's just my two cents.
In a perfect world, I think the builders should come to us. I'm just saying, in a perfect world, the builders should come to us before they build a subdivision and say, what is the impact to this area into the school system? But they don't come to us. They don't ask us, and we just have to kind of patch it together. So, and I've talked to several county commissioners about getting planning to come to us, but apparently, that's not going to happen anytime soon, so.
And you'd be talking about impact fees.
Yes, Mr.?
You know, we definitely don't need to have any dual zones at all. We don't need to get into that. And, you know, again, that we have got to do somehow or another, figure out a way to work with the developers and the planning commission, and because we're the ones that haven't made these decisions, and we're going to continue to grow. It's like Ms. Darby said, we're going to be doing this every two or three years, if not faster. And there's nothing we can do about it, just because we just grown so fast. But if we could all work together somehow or another, so we knew down the road what was fixing to happen, I think it would help us a whole lot and avoid this type of thing, because it's really not fair to, it's not fair to the parents, it's not fair to the teachers, it's not fair to the schools, it's not fair to us.
I agree.
But we don't have any choice. This is where the rubber meets the road, so, you know, it just, it is what it is. And unfortunately, you know, whatever we decide, that's just the way it's got to be. And parents got to understand that. We, you know, we can't do anything about the growth.
No, we can't.
And we just can't let kids be sticking out the windows, because it's overcrowded, so.
Ms. Sharp.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Listen, we can have parents start showing up at the cities, the municipalities, because that's where the subdivisions are approved. It's not the county, it's the cities. It's the city of Laverne, it's the city of Smyrna, Rockvale. That's where all the development starts, is in the cities. It doesn't have anything to do with the planning commission here in the county, because by the time it gets there, it's already done. Parents are needed to go to these meetings and say, stop the development, stop, stop building on every square inch. We need a moratorium so we can catch up, because it's not just the schools that we have issues with, it's the infrastructure.
Rockville City did do a moratorium. It was, well, no, long one, on apartments for about.
Yeah. But if parents would start going to the city, planning sessions, they have their agendas and everything out on the internet, just like we do, because that's where these big subdivisions are approved. So they're already approved at the local level before we even really know anything about them. And then by the time they get to the county, you know, I've been talking about the 11,000 permits that have been pulled from Waldron Road to Sam Ridley in that five-mile radius. It's coming, and this is part of what Rob's trying to tell us. But it's not the county, it is the city that approves these subdivisions.
Yes, Mr. Tittle.
Dr. Sullivan, now, we're talking past these concepts a little bit, so I don't want to get too far off track, but speaking of long-term planning, is there, Trey, this may be a question for you. Is there room at Stewart's Creek Elementary to add on an addition? Not without, or we'd be taking out all the playgrounds, we taking out all the pavilions? Like, what is a realistic?
Playgrounds and the pavilion are not an option. That's where all the geothermal fields are.
Okay.
It, that whole playground area is all geothermal. There is a possibility, and I did a drawing four years ago, maybe when.
29, 2020, 29.
Yeah, it's been a while. We could add, and it would be a shoehorn, but you could get about 16 classrooms.
And that's a significant, that's a significant number. What would be the price tag or something like that?
Oh, I didn't throw a price at it today, but I mean, I could have you something by Thursday, but there again, you're probably 12 to 15 million.
I mean, I think it's very realistic, just considering that we keep having these same conversations in the short period of time that I've been on the board, that these developments are going to probably grow faster than what we're expecting. So if that's the case, and whichever concept we choose is going to be better than not by far, but to look at it long-term, maybe that's a real consideration to be looking at and seeing what the price tag is on having an addition there, what the space would look like, what the concept is. Just like Ms. Darby said, I mean, we're probably going to have to get out of the box a little bit, so if this is another option, I would at least like to know what that option even looks like.
Dr. Sullivan.
Trey and I have talked about it, and just so that we're clear, it's like Rockvale Middle, it's extra classrooms. It is not an extra gym, it is not an extra cafeteria, so elementary level, that's going to be tough.
From an operation standpoint, that's where it really hurts us. We can put the children in a classroom, but you can't feed them, and you can't get them through gym. That's the problem. That's why when we, when we built Poplar Hill, we looked, we began to look at if we had to add on, what do we need? So we increased the cafeteria size. Our kitchen is okay, because they can feed more children with two serving lines. The problem is, you can't, they cannot, they can't get enough of them in there to feed them. The other problem is your related arts, your gym and those kind of things, you don't, that you can't run them, the space is not large enough. You end up needing, and I'm speaking for an elementary principal now, but you're going to need a third gym teacher. You've got to divide those kids up. We don't have the space. That's why at Poplar Hill, we built the gym half again as big. That's that expansion space to give you that. That's what happens. You can get them in there, but you can't give them the other things.
Well, even a design standpoint, it would be interesting to see if logistically, we could still work through some of those, maybe build a small gym, just in, you know, smaller, a much smaller version of what we typically have, and then have that in rotation around there. I don't know. I'm just thinking outside the box here to see what's actually on the table, because I just don't see this going completely away with these concepts.
Ms. Rosales.
I was told, I was under depression, and one of the reasons we couldn't do an addition is because there was no space, because the way that they were, they were built, it didn't have sufficient land for us to push out, because they were all in the same three areas.
That's why, that's why I use the term, we would have to shoehorn it in. It's, there's not space there. Basically, what you would look like is on the wing where the drive-up pickup line is. Each of those wings would, one wing would get four classrooms, another wing gets four classrooms, and the other wing, we would have to build out in the front, and you could get six to eight. You could possibly make it two-story. It's going, from an architectural standpoint, it's not going to be aesthetically pleasing, but it would be brick and mortar, and you could do it. But it's, they're going to be difficult, it is tight, and they would be expensive. And there is no, it would strictly have to be classroom, because there's no sewer, and there's no water, additional services there.
No bathroom?
We wouldn't be able to expand the bathroom.
Oh, wow. That's, the bathroom is a problem.
That will be a problem for elementary kids.
And that's the problem we got into at Rockvale, when we added on to Rockvale Middle. There were no additional bathrooms.
Because let me tell you, these kids go to the bathroom all the time.
Yes, they do.
Especially as young as they are.
Mr. Vaughn.
Mr. Reed, I got a solution. Let's consolidate Cedar and Canyon. Let's take over all the schools in Rutherford Canyon. We'll solve this problem.
There goes mine tomorrow.
Mr. Reed, if you'll see what the, what the next steps are, just let us know. No, it's, that was meant to be a joke, but.
Thank you.
No, I'm going to hear it from.
Yeah, there goes mine tomorrow, Mr. Vaughn. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to comment? It's not an easy decision to make, but you've done, you've given us all the data and information, and this is, I have to kudo what Mr. Vaught said. This is light years better than the way we used to do it. Yes, Mr. Vaught?
And I hate to assume things, but like, the kids that are in Stewart's Creek, they go to Stewart's Creek High School eventually.
They'll stay that way, yes, on both of these.
Where do Brown's Chapel's kids end up going to high school?
Blackman and Stewart's Creek.
So it's kind of split, 50-50 or 85-25. Where do they go to middle school?
Poplar Hill, Stewart's Creek, next year. Part of it's based on the next slides.
Brown's Chapel will pick up most.
A lot of Poplar Hill.
Poplar Hill. Okay.
Yep, it's on the next slides.
That's, so if I recap and give some names to the things we've been talking about, so in Concept One, the area that's south of Stewart's Creek Elementary off of Morton Lane, that's Cedar Hills, Derby Run, and Amberton, so directly south in the area that's B. When we go to Concept Two, the areas that are off of Seminary Road, that's Belmont and Sage Fields, and then the areas that are off of Ammellville Road or Rocky Fork area, so the more southern parts, that's Hidden Valley, Blankeny, Saddle Grove, Brightly Down, Revere at Music City, and Tucker's Point. So giving some place names of what's out there currently. So that's the elementary. If we go to middle school.
Would you recommend some rezoning for elementary?
I think with what we're talking about with Stewart's Creek, limits of what you can do for additions, bathrooms, all that stuff, that doesn't seem like a plausible, good situation, so definitely need to do something with elementary.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I do as well. I don't like it, but I do as well, trust me. I know the board has to vote on it. I'm as tired of dealing with rezoning as anybody, too.
And I think what could help, what I'm hearing from you all, is how do we start to set the plan for the areas where we know all of this development? So it's like getting to work and thinking about, what do we do in 2030, '31? This is part of the conversation that Dr. Sullivan and I have been having, is that when you go to the county, it's like, hey, look, we got to have this. You guys keep approving, not the county, but the cities in these areas approving these developments, how do we have this planned out? So that we have the land, the site needs to open in 30, '31, so we don't have the multiple.
And looking, just, and this is just me looking at just something that came to And looking, just, and this is just me looking at just something that came to me. I would probably, if I have to make a recommendation, I'd do, I'd recommend Concept One, and I know that's right by Stewart's Creek. But, we have room. Can you go to Concept One and elementary real quick? Let me see the enrollment projections. Concept One by year 2030, 31 leaves you more than a hundred open seats at Rock Springs Elementary stills. So, at 2031, if you had to revisit something, you have quite a few open seats at Rock Springs Elementary that could shift Stewart's Creek Elementary's north end boundary if you had to. Who knows what things look like at that point, but just thinking five years ahead, you have open seats at the north end boundary. So... Just moves the most kids.
Ms. Maxwell? I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I'm getting your information correct here. You're saying Rock Springs, Concept One?
Yep. And it may be very similar in Concept Two, I was just looking the most number of kids.
Okay, I'd say, because I think the numbers are exactly the same on Rock Springs.
Yep, but it leaves the most number of kids at a Concept One.
Okay.
But again, it's, you're looking, it's, it's not a large variance between the two. Looking five, looking five years out, who knows what those developments are gonna do in the next five years? I hope they don't hit faster.
So, that's the elementary, middle school. So, in Concept One, there's a lot of changes in the middle schools, because we have a lot of need, right? So, when you go back to the current middle school projections, where we're already over and it's only gonna get worse. We have the new middle school opening. One of the things right then and there, we're gonna impact kids, right? They need to go to the new middle school, so we can alleviate Stewart's Creek and Blackman. So, as we look at this boundary in the legend, there's a lot of different moves that are happening in Concept One. So, basically, I'm, I'm just gonna summarize some of the things here, there's, there's a lot of changes. But Poplar Hill uses Manson Pike and Wilkinson Pike to move south by 840. Blackman loses that, that finger that, that goes to the south, that we've been referring to as the finger, but they picked up some other neighborhoods along St. Andrews. Those would be like Franklin Heights, Evergreen Farms, Carrington Park, and Autumn Woods Apartments. Now, my clicker does, I can't shine anything on there, it like dies there, if there's, use the mouse. Right, there we go. Promise not to get any of your eyes out or something. All right, so, this is that, that finger area that we're talking about, right through here, that goes to Blackman. And so, in that particular area, those are Franklin Heights, Evergreen Farms, and Carrington Park and Autumn Woods Apartments. And then Poplar Hill is this light-green area that wraps around here. What this does with our projections, again, it's still pretty messy, right? We, we have a lot of capacity issues. Not saying either of these concepts resolves all of this, because where the buildings are, where the students live, some of our transportation would, is really difficult to try to get kids to the building and not have them on buses longer than forty-five minutes. But what we are able to achieve, again, to what Dr. Sullivan and I have been talking about, this primary focus over the next two years, is we have three buildings that in this time period would still be overcapacity. So, Christiana Middle, Rocky Fork Middle, and Smyrna Middle. And each of them, when you look at this, is about a hun, less than a hundred kids, I think, in each of these buildings. Some are like less than twenty. So, they're pretty close to what the capacity and number of students would be over the next two years. As we move into that future planning, what I wanted you to see is, when we start to get to ninety-four percent, ninety-five percent of our capacity at any of these grade bands, it's almost like you can't really do anything to solve the capacity. That indicates the need for more middle school capacity. Or like one of our other clients up in Illinois, they just decided to change their class size from twenty-four to thirty. That automatically changes the number of kids that you can put in a building. But that brings altogether different issues. At the middle school, just like elementary, we have some things that might be lunches and whatnot. So, I just give you some things that we're seeing other districts try to do, as they look at some of the costs or their ability to get land and, and build facilities. But as we look at each of these buildings, as we get out to twenty-nine, thirty, you can see that Smyrna Middle, they're over a hundred fifty students over what their capacity is. That one probably stands out the most. Rocky Fork is, is still at about seventy-five. So, we're, we're kinda holding the line. Some of the buildings are just gonna be over. It, it won't be perfect. The only way we can get it perfect is if we went to something called enrollment capping. So, once we got to the capacity, and I think we've done some things like that in the past, we start to send them someplace else. But that creates, again, a transportation issue, right? And an individual household issue when we do the enrollment capping, which is why we're trying to have zones that work. So, this is middle, middle school Concept One. Middle school Concept Two. So, this is where, with Poplar Hill, it goes into that pie wedge there along twenty-four. So, that light green. And so, what that does is it extends down Old Fort Parkway, and so everything in Blackman High School is in that downtown zone. Blackman takes on everything west of Rucker Lane, south of Franklin Road, so that includes like viewpoint, time, townhomes, overall Creek, and Kingdom Crest. So, that's that area where we come to where that finger is, and it comes to the west. So, what does that do with the numbers? In the next two years, I mean, you can see it's only Christiana Middle that's potentially overcapacity, and just slightly, by seven kids, right? Then, as we move into twenty-eight, twenty-nine, because of the changes for Blackman, you can see, there's a bubble class, is what I would call, that as they come in, a, a large class, and then as they exit in twenty-nine, thirty, they get within their capacity. We look at Rock Springs Middle, they're about a hundred and fifty kids over, and they continue to grow. As we get to thirty, thirty-one, over two hundred students. And the same thing with Rocky Fork, they go up over their capacity, but then come back down. And then when we look at Stewart's Creek and Buchanan, those two buildings, when we get out to twenty-nine, thirty, start to get over their capacity. Initially, Stewart's Creek just a little bit, but then by thirty, thirty-one, they're quite a bit over. Again, it's all the development in that area. In some ways, this is, is, is a little bit better. We look at the numbers and how much some of the buildings are over.
Yes, go ahead.
Between the two concepts, I'd definitely recommend Concept Two on this one. It shifts our numbers pretty well. Again, I know it shifts a lot of parents. Ms. Darby had a great point, middle school kids, it's three years. All of our middle schools offer pretty much the same programming. Every middle school in our county is a Level Five middle school. The other portions that you were looking at, again, we haven't rezoned middle schools in nine years. The ones that are overcrowded outside of getting towards twenty, thirty, thirty-one, where we know we have the Lee Road property, where we're gonna need a middle and a high school. Everyone else is, is close to where they're right, where they need to be. If you can go back to the map, I want to explain a couple of areas, because this, this is different. I know that there are areas that are north of the Siegel Zone, so in the orange, and that area will get a lot of attention, because that has been Siegel Middle since Siegel Middle opened. We are overcrowded at Siegel Middle School, with a lot of the cottages at Siegel, is what we call them. I think that's what we call them, is that what we call them? The cottages at Siegel Middle, and we have an addition at Oakland Middle. So, filling up Oakland Middle, we also have land at the Matthews property. To ever get a middle and a high school at the Matthews property, we have to fill the land, the seats that we have. And so, that's, that's something that we have to be able to do. And so, we do, Matthews property is in Walter Hill, so we need to use our seats at Oakland. You could use cut-off road instead, potentially, but we were trying to match this with moving from Walter Hill to Wilson. You have a lot of Christiana Middle Zone that is shifting to Whitworth. To Whitworth has been there for fifteen, sixteen years and never really grown too much with enrollment. So, this kinda stabilizes Whitworth, and makes all of our middle schools, it is tough for our middle school principals to have the largest middle school in the state at Blackman Middle, and then have still big middle schools when you look across the state, but to have middle schools under eight hundred and middle schools almost at eighteen hundred, operating the same programming. The Casein Lane downtown, we tried to match the high schools as much as possible, so you're gonna see some weird colors and go, "Why are they shifting?" Why, we tried to match some of our dual-zone Rockvale areas. And then there's one piece that, if you look at, it's yellow, and it looks like, why is Whitworth Buchanan crossing over? You have a new interchange now, and I think it's Tommy Bragg that crosses over right behind Costco, that instead of going down Highway ninety-nine in the middle of going towards the Rockvale area, trying to get a little bit of that traffic out of the Rockvale area, and getting back on the interstate and going to Whitworth instead, opposite traffic. And so, there are about a hundred and forty middle schools, I know that area's gonna be a, a change. It was either shifting that area to Christiana Middle, which we can tell is already overcrowded, or Whitworth and Whitworth had more room. So, and the interstate was better than going down two thirty-one in the morning. So, we decided to split downtown as well as split some of that Casein Lane area, just because of the sheer volume of students. There were well over twelve, fifteen hundred students in that Casein Lane, in between ninety-six and ninety-nine, in that Murfreesboro corridor to the west. It was, it was shocking how many students were in there.
And you discussed this with the middle school principals as well, and they all gave you recommendations.
Oh, yeah, multiple times we've met.
Okay.
They're sitting over there.
Ms. Maxwell? Yes, Ms. Rosales?
Okay, so, the Rockvale Zone is kinda interesting, because there's a corner over by the twenty-four, is that downtown area?
It is, it matches the high school.
It's a what?
It matches the high school. So, Rockvale High School has that area, so when you're looking at transportation, we tried to look at as much thing, I'm sure we missed something, but we look at everything we can, we already have a bus going for transportation for the high school, so picking up for middle school makes sense as well.
Not to put you in the spotlight, but can you speak into that, the Eagleville area that's currently Blackman Middle, but going to Eagleville? Why that area? Because we've looked at it, trying to rezone it, why? It's rezoned to Eagleville. Is, it's, you see where it's, at points like this, between Franklin Road, on the other side, that side, no, go?
We didn't, we didn't change Eagleville.
No, you did not, but I'm getting some questions over this side. This area here, the traditional Blackman, where they all sit in Eagleville, can you speak into that zone?
Just shifting more students to Eagleville out of, out of the Blackman area, because it's too crowded.
I'm sorry?
Just shifting more students to Eagleville out of the Blackman area, using, I know that Blackman is probably closer looking that way, but you can get on eight forty and come back forty-one to get to Eagleville.
So, it's, they're overcrowding in Blackman?
Blackman.
It's kinda driving...
Yes, and that, yes, absolutely.
Mr. Tidball?
I'm sure we're gonna get questions about this. I'm looking on the Concept Two numbers, the projections, page twenty-two here. Blackman Middle, Christiana Middle, both of those, they start off in twenty-eight, twenty-nine, overcapacity, and then by twenty, twenty, thirty, thirty-one, they back, they're both back below capacity.
Yeah.
Does this forecasting students, not as many students coming through from the elementary side, or?
Yeah, it's, it's the number of grades that are not yet in middle school, and so, there's a larger grade that works its way through. Actually, a couple of grades in that twenty-eight, twenty-nine that puts them over the capacity, and then the grades that are coming up are a little bit smaller, and so, it pulls them back under that capacity.
Very interesting, thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. ...
One point that I'll add to that, Mr. Tidball, great question, is the more schools that we do zone into Murfreesboro, Murfreesboro City Limits, the more that there's that ability for sixth-grade numbers to fluctuate a little bit. Right now, we've got Blackman, Rockvale, little bit of Christiana, Siegel, Oakland, and I'm sure I'm forgetting somebody that hits into downtown where our city limits go. Now, you've got Christiana, Poplar Hill, they're gonna hit some of that, so that your numbers, depending if a parent chooses sixth grade at Murfreesboro City or chooses us, it fluctuates even into September, based on whether a kid makes a sports team, or likes their teacher, or all kinds of reasons.
That makes sense, thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else? You've done outstanding work, sir.
Other questions, then?
Any other questions, comments?
We've spent a lot of time talking together, haven't we, Rob?
Thank you.
I have to wanna thank Jenna and Alyssa as well, because I know that we've spent a lot of time with them, so thank them as well. He doesn't.
Just don't have a phone.
I feel like your family.
The same, the same.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next, moving on to Human Resources.
Yeah, and just to hit real quick above that, Thursday is always one of my favorite things. We have our Stones River Brigade that's gonna present how well our JROTC does, and he'll present some data that is amazing, that shows how well our JROTC program does on our, our cadets. But Human Resources Collaborative Conferencing Committee pursuant to Section forty-nine, five, six, oh, five, Board of Education is required to appoint management personnel as to serve in a committee following a majority vote in favor of collaborative conferencing. Our district committee would be Andre Anthony, Kelly Chastain, Brian Sears, Brian Lewis, Suzanne Fries, La Tony Murray, and Larry Creasy.
Got a question.
Yes.
What is, who are they gonna collaborate with?
That team, and then it comes before the board after that. So, they, whoever, have they had their vote yet? About who they represent, so they have, you wanna go over that process a little bit?
So, what we do after Thanksgiving, because they brought the information where the, the employees are wanting to go into the collaborative conferencing, the pickup process, what they're doing is, they're going to be doing a week-long vote, and this is what we do every three years. And during that time, if they're a certified employee, they're able to vote whether they want REA to represent them, PET, or they want someone unaffiliated. And based upon the percentage of, that each person gets, majority of the time, it winds up being with REA, but sometimes there could be representative from PET. So, once that final scoring of, of who is recommended to represent the employees, then they'll assess a percentage of who represents them out of their group. So, they'll have, also have a group the same size as ours, based on that population. This last time it happened to be all REA.
Thank you. Ms. Sharp?
Thank you. Am I remembering correctly that Ms. Bratton, Sheila Bratton, was on this before? Didn't we have a board member, and I thought, I thought that it was her? Am I, I don't know? Okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
So, chance to do away with REA?
No, sir, they're affiliated with TEA and the National Education Associations, they're part of that tier system.
I'm not making comments, but...
Not unless state law changes with collaborative conferencing.
Yes, Ms. Sharp?
We, there was, and I didn't, I don't remember who gave us Resolution Four to removing the collaborative conferencing. That one got pretty, pretty dusty, so, but it didn't pass. It did not pass at TSB this past weekend.
Okay. Any other questions? Moving on, number nine?
All right, Siegel High School is requesting authorization to begin the process with Cambridge International. Cambridge is a comprehensive pre-K-12 academic program that includes world-class curriculum assessment, teacher resources, PD, and more, culminates in college credit at the advanced level. Cambridge offers over fifty courses at the high school level and a wide range of subjects. Cambridge offers over fifty courses at the high school level and a wide range of subjects, CT, humanities, language, STEM, and they're taught by Segal teachers. Cambridge Pathway prepares students for both college and careers through skills, content, twenty-first century learning. Cambridge currently partners with ten thousand schools in a hundred and sixty countries and has strong higher A credit policies. For a state of Tennessee, Cambridge can help to make a positive impact on state and federal graduation measures, early post-secondary opportunities or EPSOs. Cambridge AS slash A levels qualify for the following: EPO status in the Tennessee Ready Graduate, Tennessee Report Card, CCR Indicator, Ortiz and TESA Outcomes Funding.
Questions or comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Mr. Vaughn.
I've got a clarif- clarification question, I guess. When I was principal of Oakland High School, International Baccalaureate Program was approved, at that time, the school board said that no other school could have a program in competition with the IB program. Now, this program is, it's the only program in the county so far that's in competition with IB. Dual enrollment and all like that is, there's no comparison, no, there's no competition with that. But again, you know, we've got, I don't see the one, if the board approved back then not to do it, how can this be done?
Well, how many high schools have we built since the IB program was granted to Oakland?
Rockland, Stewart's Creek. And any board can take any action after another board.
Do what?
Any board can take another action after another board can. So any, this board can undo any action that a previous board or take an action that supersedes. The current motion would supersede any previous board action. We also had Cambridge at Smyrna High School, so it was there in twenty eighteen, I believe, was when.
But they did away with it, right?
Nineteen.
They've dropped it.
They did.
So, I mean, you got Smyrna, you got Central Magnet, you got the Oakland IB, and now you want to put this same program right there at Segal. To me, it just doesn't, it just doesn't make sense. I don't, I don't understand the reasoning for it because the opportunities are there and, I don't know, I, I just think you're drawing, you know, students from other schools that's, that's unfair to Oakland, unfair to Central Magnet. And so in other words, what you're saying is that what we vote on, the, the next board can come up and undo everything we do.
Correct, yes.
Pretty much, yeah.
So really what we're doing doesn't really matter.
It matters during your term.
It matters during your term.
It matters during our term.
Yes.
So we better make hay while the sun shines, right?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Darby.
Yeah.
Do we know why Smyrna ended it?
Yeah, they felt it was in competition with their Bethel program that they had with dual enrollment.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Competition with Bethel with their dual enrollment.
If they think dual enrollment in this is the same thing, they're wrong.
In regards to Mr. Vaughn's point, I, I don't know that we want to start restricting any of our schools in terms of things that are beneficial for our students. As much as you're saying it would be unfair for Segal to have it, Segal could say it's unfair for Oakland to have that IB program, so it's a service to our students, it's a way to elevate their education, and if Segal wants to take it on and make it successful, I say more power to them.
I think the county has grown a lot since then, and I think our parents want, all of the high schools, I'm always telling people, all of our high schools have excellent programs, from vocational, high-end academics, and this is a high-end, respected program similar to IB. All of our kids should have an opportunity, and not everybody's going to be able to go to Oakland or to Central Magnet, but we have kids that can perform at that level and their parents want this, so I, I, I don't think this will hurt. I think, we're too big now, this is not going to hurt any of our schools.
I think it's, it's beneficial for them to have, not everybody can drive to Oakland, so it gives those in that same area that maybe can't make it that far, a different opportunity for something similar. I think it's the same thing, you know, there are a lot of kids that depend on programs like that. If they don't make it into a school like Central, then they're looking for something that's elevated from traditional education still, so I think it's just another good addition to our school system.
Yes, Ms. Sharp.
And we also have Blackman Collegiate Academy, that's a fabulous program, so they're, they're not the only programs that are here, but they are...
I don't think, I don't think one program is, is, is going to hurt another school. I think each school can stand alone with their programs, and that's why I'm glad to represent Rutherford County, because I really think we need to have these kind of programs at all of our high schools. You know, we're all competitive and I understand that, that's great, but our students and our families want these and desire these programs, and I'm glad we can offer them.
They got dual enrollment, they got...
Dual enrollment is not the same as IB or Cambridge.
That's exactly, none of these are the same as IB. I don't care what you say, Mr., the, the kids that go through the IB program can go anywhere in the country. When we started IB, IB starts, the number one program across the world is International Baccalaureate Program. Now, and so that's why we started that program, and Vanderbilt University didn't give full rides to kids because they're in the Blackman Collegiate Academy or the, they don't give scholarships for that. Mr. Vaughn, I think, if I'm not mistaken, I believe you had a child that went through the IB program.
Yes.
And there's some word out there, there's some communication that kids aren't getting a full diploma from Oakland High School, which is absolutely false. There's been ninety-six kids got the full diploma for the IB program in the last four years. So the people that are putting that word out is incorrect.
I haven't heard that.
And do what?
I hadn't heard that.
You hadn't heard that?
Mm-mm, not at all. Mm-mm.
Mr. Vaughn, did, did your son, where'd he go to school?
Jackson was one, I think, Mr. Vaughn, if I remember right, Jackson was one of the first ones to ever get the diploma. And, and he did, and he was fortunate enough to get selected for the Cornelius Vanderbilt Scholarship at Vanderbilt University, and also graduated as Vanderbilt's Outstanding Senior. So I have to believe that the IB program at Oakland High School was a direct reflection of his collegiate education. I, I would say this, I think probably, I'm guessing that the board's infinite wisdom at that time when the IB program was started, or much like the Magnet School program was started, I think you, you kind of call a timeout maybe in the county and you don't start so many programs at one time. That way you garner success with whichever. I think the IB program has been fantastic, I think the Magnet School program has been fantastic, you know, as the chairman has stated, maybe the county's gotten big enough now that we can justify another program. I don't think it's a slight toward the IB or the Magnet program, either one, but, and I thank you for that. I, I have told Butch this many, many times, and he saved me tens of thousands of dollars in scholarship. Hundreds of thousands of dollars in scholarship money, but anyway, it's, I never knew anything about it, but it was a very rigorous program. But Cambridge, I'm sure, has got its attributes also, so much like the rest of the board, I think we can justify too in the county.
Yes, Dr. Salt.
Yeah, I would, ultimately, I wouldn't have it on here if I didn't support it. I don't want to do anything, of course, to hurt any of our schools, but my job is to promote our entire district and anything we can do to promote all of our schools. We have on, we have over nineteen thousand high school students, and so we've got, we have grown large enough that we can promote opportunities for, yes, it is ridiculous, needed nineteen thousand high school students alone. Yeah.
Ms. Maxwell? Yes, Ms. Rosales.
Does Stewart's Creek have a baccalaureate or?
No.
So how can we get them also to include something like this? Because I, with this, one of the biggest issues we have is that we don't have enough Magnet schools. As big as we are, we don't have the luxury of...
Stewart's Creek's overcrowded, so a lot of it has to do with open seats. And Segal High is currently dual-zoned, and so we are not over capacity there.
Well, Blackman was, I mean, I'm not trying to do anything back and forth, but Blackman is overcrowded and they still have the baccalaureate program.
They do.
So...
Do what now?
They have their baccalaureate program.
What?
Blackman High School.
They don't have Blackman, no.
And I, Blackman Collegiate Academy is not nationally recognized, it's locally...
So how can, and that's something that...
And Blackman Collegiate Academy is amazing, I'm just saying.
Yes, it is.
That is, when you get into the...
Yes, it is.
Yes, when you get into the distinctions.
Yes, they're all amazing.
They're all amazing.
They're all amazing.
Cambridge and IB are the only international...
Isn't Blackman Collegiate, you have to be in the Blackman Zone, correct?
Yes, you have to be in Blackman Zone to be in there. So why can't there be something like that for Stewart's Creek, where they have to be zoned in there to have that as well? I'm looking from the equitable...
Every school has their own.
That's the, every school.
Every school already has their own type of, so Stewart's Creek has their own arts academy that you have to be zoned in there. La Verne accepts outside with their early college program. Riverdale has their honors college. Everybody's got something already.
And how will we get to get the program at Blackman? Is that, that was something that the principal who started that has been, had worked to get accredited? So what is it? I don't know how this all works.
There is no national accreditation for it.
Gary Nixon started it back when he was first principal of Blackman High School, and I was at Blackman Middle and we worked together to do that. And, you know, the thing that people don't understand, the IB program is, you know, you go to Ivy League school, you go to Vanderbilt, you go to any place, and if you got an IB diploma, they give you a full ride. That's how much they believe in it. They told us it was the number one academic program in the world. Now, Blackman Collegiate Academy is great, it's a great academic program, but you're not going to get a, you know, colleges don't really recognize it as anything different than any other...
We can make a change of that and...
Hey, guys, I apologize, but I would like to take a five-minute bathroom break right now. This has gotten a little bit long, I know we're almost towards the end, but I would like, as the chair, I would like to take a five-minute recess for the restrooms, please.
Second.
Okay, next we have the...
Oh, can I ask one question?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, what, what does that Cambridge program cost?
I'll find out with Dr. Chastain, she'll be here Thursday.
I'll have that for you Thursday.
So can every school in the county?
Yes.
Thing do it if you want to?
Be the same as IB.
Okay, thanks.
TESA accountability report?
Yeah, so this aligns part of TCA forty-nine three one twelve, and the board has a copy of this. School districts of Tennessee are required to present their Tennessee Investment in Student Achievement, or TESA Accountability Report for Public Review and Comment and Board Approval prior to being submitted to the Tennessee Department of Education. TESA Accountability Report will be reviewed annually to determine whether a school district is taking proper steps to achieve their stated goals. The report will be submitted annually to TDOE in November. Since this was our board meeting in November, these just basically go over our stats, uh, starting proficiency in advance going all the way through 2030. So, happy to discuss that further.
Anybody got any questions or comments today? Okay. Okay. Next, we have legal.
This is the first reading of two readings. The below policies are recommended on the first reading. These policies will be brought at the next scheduled board meeting for a second and final reading. Board Policy 1.703, School Attendance Zones and Exemptions. Adds requirement of primary domicile to be in Rutherford County at the time of application. B, Policy 3.206, Community Use of School Facilities. Adds language to allow deposits to secure school facilities. C, Policy 4.601, Reporting Student Progress. Removes Driver's License Revocation to Align with State Law. D, Policy 4.605, Graduation Requirements. Adds Computer Science Credits Starting with the 24-25 School Year to Align with State Rules and Regulations. E, Policy 6.204, Tenants of Non-Resident Students. Adds Language to Exempt School, Choice Schools from Early Admission. And F, Policy 6.701, Student Solicitations, Fundraising Activities, and Adds Language for Online Fundraising. And this again is the first reading, we'll have the second reading December 11th.
Okay. Any comments or questions there? Okay.
Let me, one question about the, uh, let's see, the technology, computer science credits, is that gonna affect-
Is that what?
That's gonna, not gonna affect, uh-
When they can graduate and all that?
Okay.
Nope.
Okay. Next, number two, we have discipline hearing.
Yep, the, we have several disciplines, this is the only discipline hearing appeal, 251101. Boards have requested review, a decision of the Director of Schools. Disciplinary Hearing Authority appelled the school's decision to zero tolerance of a student from Eagle Bowl School. Director of Schools modified the offense to a remandment. Based on a review of the record of the DHA and the Director of Schools, the board may A, affirm the decision of the Director of Schools, B, overturn the decision of the Director of Schools, or C, grant a hearing. So, it was zero tolerance, I did modify to a remandment.
Yeah. Any questions? Next.
We have a couple transfers under discipline. The first one, the board's been requested to admit a transfer student from another school system under discipline. The student was remanded for possession of THC. According to Policy 6.318, the board may deny admissions of any student except those in state custody when a student transfers from another school system under suspension or expulsion, Director of Schools' recommendations to deny.
Okay. Number three?
Transfer student under discipline two. The board's been requested to admit a transfer student from another school system under discipline. Student was placed at an alternative learning center for a student assault. According to Policy 6.318, the board may deny admissions of any student except those in state custody when a student transfers from another school system under suspension or expulsion, and Director of Schools' recommendations to deny.
Okay. Number 11, Engineering and Construction.
Several things here. Murfreesboro Water and Sewer requests for land purchase at Sequel High. As part of the Thompson Lane T.D.O. Road Widening Project, Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department will be required to make water line adjustments. They have provided drawings and inappropriate land purchase documents for approval. The value to offer is 4,000, almost at 4 million, that would've been amazing. 4,746.65 for both permanent and temporary easements. Engineering and Construction are to be the request and has no objection.
You think we could round that up to five?
Yeah, I was, yeah. I did too, I just went 4 million, that's great, great job, Trey. I don't know what we're getting out of that, but awesome job.
I would still think we could round that up to five. Okay. Number two?
Oakland High School Change Order Number One, Engineering and Construction with Input from Principal John Marshall requests to utilize 500,000 of available site construction funds to address additional renovation of areas inside the existing building. This work will include additional flooring, ceiling replacement, additional fire alarm replacement, and paint. Works been reviewed by GMC Architecture and the cost approved. This is not a request for additional funds, but the reallocation of unused site funds for the project. Engineering and Construction has reviewed the request and has no objection. I do want to note, Riverdale had a change order for 450, nope, 550,000. However, Oakland's project overall is above the cost for Riverdale. I hate that the utilities cost more at Oakland than they did Riverdale, but the overall cost for the project cost more, which is why Riverdale had 550,000 allocated and Oakland only had 500,000 allocated. So, in case you're contacted, you want to hit some of that? No?
Some of the furniture and some of the programs at Oakland was different than Riverdale, and some of that cost was higher too. So, our overall cost, we've actually expended more money at Oakland. This is just the work that the contractor did.
Yep. Because normally we try to keep them exactly the same. But there, if you go back in a minute, you will see 50,000 more for Riverdale than Oakland.
I got a question, but-
Mr. Vaughn.
The, the old bathrooms out there, you know, have they been redone at Oakland?
Has what been redone?
The old bathrooms, you know, down there? They have been.
Yes, sir, that's part of this project. We're completing all of the bathrooms at Riverdale and Oakland.
So, they won't have to come out of this money, correct?
It's part of this, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Next.
All right, next, Town of Smyrna, Cedarstone Sewer Realignment Request. Town of Smyrna is undertaking an extension of the sewer system along Morton Road. In doing so, the city has terminated portion of sewer on RCS properties under the wing walls of the bridge. They request relocation of this section while making adjustments for this project. This adjustment will not affect the roadways or service RCS, but will require an updated easement agreement. Engineering and Construction have reviewed the request and has no objections.
Any questions or comments? Okay, number four?
Transportation Contract Termination of Bus 96 Pursuant to Section 8.1 of the Rutherford County Board of Education Bus Contract. Transportation Department received a letter dated November 4th, 2025 from Angela Gilli, Contractor for Bus 96, requesting voluntary termination of her contract with the board. She stated her termination date is December 1st, 2025. Based on previous board approval, there'd be a return of insurance stipend funding for insurance to RCS of $2,399.76.
Number five? Yes, Mr. Vaughn.
All right, question. The, the, the balance of that insurance, and I think it's one of the reasons we kind of set it up this way, would that go to the new contractor, uh, that's gonna replace that route?
That would be a finance thing, but I think it would go back in the general fund, and then they would issue a $4,000 check to the new person.
You, you, okay, so it wouldn't-
You can't prorate the purchase of the insurance going forward, because theirs is gonna be for three years, or I mean, for the whole year.
Well, it'd be for a year.
If it's an existing contractor, there's a possibility that in theory their insurance could be less, but we have no mechanism to request that information.
I'm with you.
They're with, they get $4,000.
Yeah, but I want to talk to finance before.
Yeah, that, and that was my only concern, which leads me to, I do, under discussion, I want to bring up something about insurance.
Okay.
Uh, it's, you having any trouble getting these routes picked up, Bother?
We're gonna discuss that in a few minutes, too.
All right.
Number five?
Transportation Contract Termination, Bus 201. Pursuant to Section 8.1 of the Rutherford County Board of Education Bus Contract. Transportation Department received a letter dated September 22nd, 2025 from Kristy Taylor, Contractor for Bus 201, requesting voluntary termination of her contract with the board. She has stated her termination dates November 30th, 2025. Last dated drives, November 21st, 2025. Based on previous board approval, there'd be a return of insurance stipend funding for insurance to RCS of $2,421.98.
Okay. Number six?
On September 24th, Transportation Department emailed all contractors with a new route awarding procedure and application for existing contractors. Deadline for applications was October 14th, and there were 11 applicants who received calls from a few contractors that either did not read the information or the information went to their junk mail, or they did not understand that the board initiated a new procedure for awarding routes per the Procedure 3.4, pages three through five. We're prepared to begin the new awarding process, but want the board to be aware of the situation prior to receiving calls.
So, Mr. Vaughn, we're back to your question. And I'm gonna explain this as best I can. On September 24th, right after the board meeting, if y'all remember, we went through how we were gonna do that, and y'all approved the policy and procedure. The next day, we sent out an email to all contractors with that procedure as an attachment. That said, if you want to be part of the new route awarding for this year, fill out this form and send it back. We had 11 people do it. We got ready to start doing the random drawing, and our phones started ringing. Well, wait a minute, I didn't get my name in, wait a minute, I didn't get my name in. And we said, "Did you get this email?" "Oh, yeah, but I didn't read it." "What, what, what, what do you mean the route awardings changed? We go by seniority, this is the way we do it." And I said, "Nope, board changed all that. We sent y'all an email on September 24th." So, the reason I'm bringing this to you tonight is I'm gonna give you two options. We're gonna ride with, we sent an email out on September 24th, and I got 11 qualified contractors that want new routes, and that's our list. Or, we can go back to, everybody gets a chance, and I can send out another email on y'all's behalf that says you didn't read the first one. Here's the second one. If you want to join and be a part of the route awarding process, you need to fill out the form. And give them 10 days or 15 days to send me the form. Choice is yours. We've already fulfilled what the policy and procedure says, but I don't want your phones to start ringing going, "We didn't get a chance." And then next time, we're back in here trying to decide how to undo it. So, before we move forward, I'm asking what you all would like to do.
Comment, I mean, I think it'd be tremendously unfair to 11 people that did read and did what you told them to do, to undo all of it and do it all over again. That's just, that's just me.
Yes, sir.
We've lost the, okay, I'm sorry, I couldn't see her. Somebody run this meeting.
I'm sorry.
How, how many, basically, I mean, we changed policy for the, for the power hour, but, so, what, how many of you had called or that would be interesting?
Maybe a half a dozen, but I'm not saying that the others haven't, still don't know that we've changed-
Right, right. So, when are you trying to accomplish this?
Well, right now, I've got open routes, and I've had open routes since September.
So ASAP, ASAP, so we make the decision.
So, if you would like for us to send out another email, I'll be glad to ask Mr. Johnson's team to do so, but I'm gonna give them a short window to respond, and if they don't, we're moving on.
I mean, theoretically, if we, if we changed it Thursday night, tell them to have it in by December 1?
I'd give them a week.
Week?
We could, if you change it Thursday night, I'm gonna ask Transportation to send an email out Friday morning and give them to the next Thursday afternoon.
A lot of times in life, you don't get a second chance, but if, if, if we decide we want to give them a second chance, it needs to be quick-
Yes, sir, that's what I'm saying.
Okay. We'll handle that.
And we'll do whatever you all would like, but I, I do, did want to bring it to your attention, because I thought, well, I can be obstinate and just go ahead and start awarding routes, but then-
Phone, the phone rings. Thank you, thank you for thanking of us, thank you. Thank you, Vice Madam Chairman.
Any other questions? Anybody else?
Madam Chairman.
Hi.
I, I'm along the lines of just giving another opportunity here. I, I obviously, some of these emails probably went to junk mail or something like that, too. There's probably other circumstances other than them just particularly ignoring it. I'm sure some did that as well, but I'm open to it, as long as we can make it a quick turnaround and doesn't really hold up the process, then we can go back and say that there was nothing that we did that was, we didn't give them enough opportunity. We gave you two opportunities, that's plenty. Uh, I'm good with making that recommendation.
Anybody else want to speak? Yes, Mr. Vaughn?
I just got concerned, really, for the 11 that did what they were supposed to do. You opened it back up, now they don't get the routes. To me, that's just unfair. I, I don't know.
Well, it's a new change, and so, when there's change, there's always pain to, you know, there's a little bit of a pain in the beginning. All right, so the next thing is Communications Report? That'll be Thursday night, okay. Co-potential closing, is that something that you need to-
Yes, and drop, yes, and drop a potential closing last at least three or four years. We close the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. The county closes on Veterans Day, we are open on Veterans Day. The, if, it's, because it is not a official state holiday, the courthouse decides what they do on Wednesday, usually before, whether they go home early or not. Our payroll, in order for payroll department to know, they have to know by the 21st. And so, because of when our payroll runs. And so, we would appreciate it, but regardless, we'll, we'll take whatever the board decides. But the last couple of years, we've, it's our central office that closes.
Mr. Vaughn, were you saying something? Yes, it is. Mr. Tidwell?
Yes, uh, we've done this historically in the past, I don't see any issue with it.
Mm-hmm. So, we need to take a motion on Thursday about that? Okay. I think is, Murfreesboro City Schools is closed as well on Wednesday, do you know Thursday?
I know, I have no idea what their staff does.
Well, I, I know you don't know, because-
No clue.
But just trying to stay, I know we try to do similar things, but, all right? That's okay. Sorry.
Director's Update. Trey, do you want to go over the other item, Transportation, or Mr. Reed? Good.
We sent the director, we, we discussed at a previous board meeting that we had some route descriptions that we had not received. Uh, and we discussed that there was, um, it's Section 2.6D of the contract that, um, to provide this, and it says that, and it said that we could withhold their money, but the board asked that we not do that. We, we sent out another email on October 17th asking for the route descriptions for the second time. We still have a number that have not turned in those route descriptions for us. So, at this point, with the board's authorization, we can begin to withhold the money, or you guys can direct us on how you would like us to move forward now, because we, it helped, we need these route descriptions to verify our routes.
Yes, Ms. Darby?
Have you gotten any response from them, or has it just been crickets?
Uh, we, we've got one or two, but the rest has been crickets.
Has anybody tried calling them to see if there's, and they're not, like, there's no communication?
No, we, we've talked to most of them, and they felt like it's not required.
Okay, good to know.
And Mr. Johnson has tried as well, correct? Could you, yeah?
At this point, we do feel this is intentional. This is intentional. This is not, we missed this deadline, it was, you know, it's intentional.
Sorry, Madam Chairman. How many, Trey?
11.
Contractors around 11, it's a different 11, but it's about 31 or two routes.
Would the board like for me to send you the list? Has anybody been removed from that list as of yesterday?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll send the board the list as soon as we're done of the routes.
Thank you.
Did we discuss, I apologize for having to step out, okay. Then we get to general discussion? Yes, Mr. Vaughn?
Uh, one thing I need a little feedback on, I think, if you remember, and this goes along with transportation on the bus drivers, the contractors and all that, in this year's contract, we put a stipend in there for insurance, and we also asked the county insurance, um, and Jeff may want to comment on this. I, I don't know, there was confusion early on. Could, could the county continue to furnish liability insurance, could they not? You know, when the county bid the insurance out, this past year, they left the school buses out because they were under the impression likewise myself, if you read the statute, the law, it kind of leans you that way, but I think we came to the conclusion maybe the county could furnish the insurance, um, not putting you on the spot, but-
Well, the law was changed.
Yeah, the law changed, and, and so, we, we believe now we, we could furnish it. Is that, is that what we believe? And so, here's my question to the board. The county is fast approaching putting their bid specs together. Do we want to, um, go back and, and request the, you know, county finance, insurance, health and ed, you know, I think it's a big decision, you know, going one way or the other. Are we in, are we out? But we, we don't need to let this slip up on us, you know- But we, we don't need to let this slip up on us, you know, June 1, May 1, and say, oh, I wish we'd have done this. It takes them about six months to put everything together, so I kind of, I guess I'm looking for a little direction from the board, you know, do we, we, we had requested them to do the six month, no, there were, if I remember correctly, there was nine companies approached and none of them bid, none of them offered insurance. And so, you know, what's the will of the board, I guess? We, we need to notify the county commission, I think, where it's not left out again this year, if that's something we want to offer the contractors. Does that make sense? I just don't want, I, I just don't want this deadline to slip up on us, so I thought I'd bring it up tonight.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Mr. Tidwell.
I really appreciate you bringing that up, Mr. Vaughn. I, I think that that would be a great thing for us to do. I think one of the issues that, because of the change in state law, the reason so many insurers, insurers did not, decided not to take on the, the contractors was because it wasn't included in the county budget. I think if it was included in, like it had done in historical precedent before, be included in the county budget, I think they'd be more likely to get picked up. And it's costing, at least from when we were having all these conversations, it's costing the schools, school district about $250,000 each year by going to the stipend way versus what we had before. So, I would be certainly for it. If we can go ahead and put that back on the radar, I think that'd be great.
Excellent. Anything else? Yes, Ms. Sharp?
Mr. Reed, do you have an update on the Lee Road property?
Yes, there, I've talked to the attorney actually today, so he's progressing along with his paperwork that he needs to be done with the court to get all that closed. So everything's coming along fine on that.
Okay. And is there a closing date?
Pardon?
Are we going to, do we need to vote on that again? Is there a closing date?
No, there's nothing to, there's nothing to vote on. The county, the school board, the board has already approved the purchase, this board has approved it, and the county commission has approved the funding. So there's no other votes on it.
Okay. So, I've got a few more things. Does anybody else have any, anything for Mr. Lee? I'm done, I'm done.
Sorry, Mr. Reed. We had some legal things I had asked you about, will we be going into executive session today or Thursday to get an update on that?
Thursday.
Thursday, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Sharp? Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Laverne Middle, I visited with the teacher that was head of the Men of Distinction and they're looking for shirts with ties. They can be white, they can be colored, they're teaching the young men how to dress and tie ties, so if you need that information or if you want to drop off some shirts and some ties at Laverne Middle, they would greatly appreciate it. Excuse me. Also, Laverne Lake did their first amazing shake on Monday, and I think that they're going to have some that will probably, I'm going to say they're going to make it to Atlanta, so they did, they did a great job, so thank you. Anything else? Okay, we done? Any other comments? Or just discussion or stuff? Okay. Otherwise, Ms. Darby?
Move to adjourn.